Are we good?
Yes, I'm just letting in the.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Mitchell, here. Ms. Marilyn.
Here.
Councilman Best.
President.
Councilwoman Bravo, here. Councilman Best.
Here.
There's a four. Thank you all standing for an invitation by Councilwoman Bravo.
Before prayer, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the grandfather of Councilwoman Bravo. And and we wish for for him to be surrounded by his loyal family at this time. And know that he is loved. We pray for the agenda set forth before us this evening, and ask that we be granted the ability to work together in harmony when there's honest disagreement and dissent. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak, and the patience to listen perceptibly and empathically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern with the conflicting interests and issues that we encounter, and attain the sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. May we be reminded that we're not only leaders, but also servants, and it's our responsibility to serve and help and give to all the residents and residents. Amen. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance that apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our city central council meeting tonight. And let's people start with public comments. Is there anyone who has? Okay, virtually here. All right, so. Bill, I guess I'll be the speaker. Our new resources director.
Hello. Good evenings. David. First, I wanted to say that one of our firms has withdrawn from the process. That's Slavon Management Consultants. They they took on some additional work last week, and they were at maximum capacity. They do know, they do know the other firms. And I spoke directly above Slavon, and he said that you would be put in hands with whoever we chose. So he was very gracious. Let's draw. My recommendation to the council is that you allow for five to 10 minutes or however much time you choose for for the representatives of these search firms to do a presentation or introduction. At least one of the firms, I know that the PowerPoint slide that I'm going to show you. So that's my recommendation.
Okay, any comments from council, any suggestions before we get started?
I think.
Okay, all right, I think it's reasonable. We have three firms. So let's go ahead and get started. If we could, Enzo, let you collect again the order and.
Well, I, you know, in in the absence of it, I know we can randomly draw things, but I just use alphabetical order. And so that's and that's what I even use on your table. So I would start with Colin Bensinger and Associates, followed by Gov HR, followed by Mercer Group. They're all, I believe, on Zoom call.
And and I want to welcome all three firms, the representatives from all three firms to our meeting. Thank you very much for being here. We look very much forward to hearing your presentation and and learning more about your firm and how we possibly work together. So with that said, let's start with Colin Bensinger Associates.
Mayor, only for three of the presentations, I think was not fully asked that the other two firms during during the time that each firm is presenting, or you could just step out, if you can put them in the waiting room, will we?
Yes, please. Same, right?
So Colin, Colin Bensinger. Correct. So Linnell Klein and Stephen Sorrell are their representatives. Those two can remain on and then from Gov HR with the Jim Dineen and Heidi Borges. And then from Mercer Group with the Donna Hagan-Botham. So the three of them would go with the waiting room.
Would you like us to sign out and then be admitted back into the waiting room?
Um.
You should just get in the waiting room.
We can put you in the waiting room. That way you don't have to sign out, just hang out and wait for us to invite you back in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And and then we're going to ask for a presentation up to 10 minutes and allow us some time for questions right after. So possibly 15 minutes, 20 will, you know, if we have a lot of questions, we'll move on to the next one. Okay, thank you so much. So Stephen Sorrell is on. Stephen and Linnell. Ms. Klein, Mr. Sorrell, welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. I think Linnell's on, I'm not sure.
She's coming back, she's coming back. She's muted currently.
She's unmuted. Okay, can you hear me now?
It's welcome. Both of you, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having Steve and I come and present the material to you, and thank you for your consideration. Just to tell you a little bit about Colin Bensinger and Associates, Colin started this business in 1997. His goal was to become Florida's preeminent recruiter. And he he likes to say he didn't know how to run a business, but he felt like if he focused on quality, communication, and integrity, we do do just fine. And so here we are, 26 years later, we worked in 34 states, and we have a national reputation for excellence. And we've actually done 121 of the last 191 searches in Florida where a city or county has chosen to use a recruiter. And so that's a bit more than 70% of all of our competitors combined. So what we built our reputation on is first conducting a problem-free search. And you know, just in making a few mistakes of our own and watching our competitors, we've we've realized that most recruitments fall apart because of one of two reasons. And the first is poor background checks. We do the best in the business, and we do them early. Anyone we present to you has been through our vetting process, and we're comfortable recommending them. Some firms wait until after the interviews take place, and we just feel that that's too late. And we don't want you to announce, you know, that you would be hiring somebody and then find out that a big negative in their past. So we just don't like you to have any surprises, and we don't like any surprises either. So that's the first area. And the second is not keeping to the schedule. Once we set a schedule, it we'd never change it. The, of course, our clients can request to change, and we'll work with them on that, that's fine. But if recruitment drags on too long, you lose the your best people. And so it's important to stay on schedule. And another factor is communication. We've been told we do the best in the business communicating both with our clients and with the candidates, and we feel it's important to communicate with the candidates because we represent you and and our communication, you know, the way that we handle the process is a reflection of you. And so we want to make sure that everything that we do reflects well on you, and communication is part of that. Our goal is always to bring you the best people. We want to bring, we usually try to bring seven to 10 individuals for consideration, and we want to make it hard for you to choose because and bringing a variety of great people. And probably last, I would say the one thing that sets us apart is reliability. We say what we do when we do what we say. We've never missed a project milestone. We've never asked a client for more money, even when circumstances and foreseen circumstances have occurred. We always stand by our quoted price. And so if you'd like, I can walk through our process a little bit.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we'll start out by getting to know you. And we know quite a bit about you already, and we just want to know who you are, what you're looking for in your next manager, and what type of projects they're going to be working on. And you know, if if you need someone in planning, then that's a skill that we'll look for. The next step would be to prepare good marketing materials. We want it to be attractive and positive, but also very accurate. And and you'll notice our brochures are fairly long, our recruitment brochures, if you've ever seen one. But we feel that the more information we can give about the opportunity, the better chance we have of finding the person that would be the best fit in that role. I should say finding the individuals because ultimately it's your choice who you hire. But the next step is to create a buzz in the industry. Our, we have over almost 14,000 individuals that receive an email whenever we post a recruitment. So we feel that we've cast a pretty wide net in that regard. We also network, we advertise. But the trick is really just to start talking about the job to others in the industry. And making sure that that everyone is aware of the opportunity. We do the preliminary screening internally. We'll just usually two of us, sometimes it's Colin and I, sometimes it's Stephen and Colin. Sometimes it's Steve and I, but we conduct those preliminary background checks. And if for the individuals who pass that, then we start on the detailed background checks. And that's what I mentioned earlier. So we run criminal records at the county, state, and federal level. We do civil at the county and federal level. We do credit and bankruptcy. And you know, sometimes there's a good reason that a candidate may have a bankruptcy. We just want you to know if it's out there. So again, there are no surprises, so that somebody won't come up to you and say, wow, did you know this, this person you just hired has a bankruptcy in their past? If they have a good reason, that's great. We'll still present them, but it's just good that you're aware of it ahead of time. We check motor vehicles, we verify education, we also verify employment for the last 15 years. We call references, and we don't, instead of saying, give us a list of your five best friends, you know, we tell them exactly who we want to talk to. We want council members, we want the Chamber of Commerce Director. We want to talk to some subordinates, the city attorney. And in that way, typically, we can find out everything that we need to know. We also do an exhaustive internet and newspaper search, and we'll compile that, and that'll be part of the sample candidate report. It is a lot of material, but we highlight the name of the candidate in their internet research, so it's easy to kind of skim through it and and read what you want to read. And so and once we present them to you, then we'll call you individually. We'll discuss the candidates with you. And once you've picked the finalists, we notify every one of their status. Again, that communication piece is really important to us. We make sure that they're always up to date. And so then we go into the interview process, and typically what we recommend for that is it'll start with a tour of the city. And sometimes it'll include a lunch or some kind of a meet and greet with the staff. A public reception that evening where it'll, it's a nice way for you to introduce yourselves to the candidates. But it also gives you an opportunity to stand back and and watch how they interact with the public, because that's going to be a really important part of their job. But so it's a nice icebreaker. And then the next morning, we always recommend one-on-one interviews, where you'll have usually about 40 minutes with each candidate, one-on-one, and then a panel interview in the afternoon. And from there, it really depends on you. Some of our clients like to make the decision that same day. Some of them like to sleep on it over the weekend and reconvene the next, you know, in a few days and talk about, decide then. And so however you decide to handle that, we will support. So and once the manager is selected, we'll notify every one of their status who hasn't already been notified, and then we can assist with the contract negotiations if you want. And again, that's up to you. So we can work with you on the contract negotiations. Of course, the city attorney will want to be involved. And or we can just, you know, a member of your staff can handle the contract negotiations, and then we'll just stay in the loop on there, but we'll be there to help all through the process with whatever questions or assistance that you need. So that's basically our our process in a nutshell. And we hope to work with you. So do you have any questions for us, for me, or Steve?
Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, Councilwoman Lo.
Um, I I was just just going through your completed searches prior to 2023. And I I know you probably don't know why this is this way, but if you could get back to us and let us know. In Coco Beach, there were three different searches for city manager within five years. Just curious at why.
You know, that is, I would love to get back to you on that. Those were projects that Colin handled, and so I don't have the details on them, but we can definitely get.
I didn't, I I knew you would probably have to, but I really would like to know. Same thing with the city of Deltona and Doraville, Georgia. So if you could, if you could please let us know what the what the issues were there, because they were, there were several searches within a short amount of time. And when we're looking for a manager, we want to keep up for a long time. So.
Yes. I I know in Doraville, the second search, they hired the interim manager. And she eventually, she retired after, I want to say, two or three years. And so then we did the search for her replacement, and and he's still there. I don't recall the details on the first search, so but we will definitely get back to you.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Sir.
I'm going to help you. You had asked a question earlier, Councilman Best, you're could ask a question earlier about what you actually, what 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 your opinions or thoughts were on what we thought would be a good fit for a city manager. I'm prepared to respond to that if you wish.
Okay.
I have six bullet points. First is good people. Second is good management ethic. Third is relations with county and other cities. There is understanding state and county statutes. Fourth is the ability and the ability to build and finalize a budget. Fifth is to envision ability to follow through with a specific project. Those would be my thoughts.
Okay, that's a great list.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Best. Any other questions? I do have one. I wanted to ask you, the majority of, when you said that you've done 121, I think you said 191.
Yes.
Were those four city managers, or were those four? What type of positions?
It it would have been the city or county manager or administrator. But it would be the C CEOs for cities or counties in Florida. So that would not include any of our director searches or assistant manager searches. That is just the top-level position. So city manager, city administrator, county administrator.
And usually, in this case, I'm just curious, do you find the candidates from, do they tend to be from Florida? Or locally, you know, in South Florida, or state, or nationwide in general?
We we generally have a good mix. I think managers tend to stay in their region unless they have a good reason to move outside of their reason, region, maybe they want to be closer to family. And so we tend to see in our Florida searches, a high number of Florida candidates. We also have some out-of-state interests. One thing that we've learned over the years is there is a little bit more of a learning curve with a manager from out of state, just because laws vary from state to state. But it, they, a good manager will get up to speed quickly, and it won't impact. You know, it's not something that ends up really being a factor.
And when you said you you like to be able to present several candidates for us, do you say you have five of them that you're suggesting that we interview? Do you provide any kind of summary as to which you think might be better suited, or what qualifications, you know, to distinguish them for us based on your personal recommendation? And I know you're going to, each one will have their own information, but do you do any further so in the honor of words of picking up prioritizing?
Yeah, typically, typically, we leave the prioritizing to to you, the decision maker. If, you know, we will call you individually once you receive the reports, and if you wanted to ask us our opinion, we're certainly happy to share it with you. And but it really is your decision, and so we'll answer whatever questions you have. But we don't typically make recommendations unless we're asked, because it, like I said, it's ultimately your decision.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Best?
Linnell, Councilman Best, again, just briefly, I noted in your, what you had sent us that you have placed nobody in a position we're interested in in Miami-Dade County. Is that correct?
We, well, we just finished a search in Miami-Dade County. Steve was actually the lead on that, so he could talk a little bit about that if you'd like.
Okay. And also, of of all the ones that you had had mentioned within the state of Florida, only three are even close to our population. Do you feel that that's important seating a city manager?
No, I feel the process is really the same. You know, it's, the key components are getting to know you as a city and what you're looking for, so that we can recruit prepare the recruiting materials properly and vetting the candidates, and that process, the process works, I guess. That's what I would say is we, over the last 26 years, we've developed this process that works in every situation. We've applied it. So whether the community has 5,000 population or 150,000 population, the process works.
Thank you, Linnell.
Commissioner, just one question.
Yes, go ahead. Under your fee and warranty, it mentions something to the effect that it is being asked for more work, and it's pretty realistic.
Although it'll be $150 per hour, what type of scope of work would we be talking about, just so that we can make sure we're not?
Well, well, the first thing I would say is we would never charge you an additional fee without telling you upfront saying, if you want us to do that, it's going to cost X amount of dollars. But in the whole history of our of our business, we have never charged anybody an additional fee, even when we've been entitled to it. You know, sometimes we'll have, we'll bring up the candidates, and we feel like they're great candidates. The elected officials, maybe they just don't find anybody in the mix that they feel is the right fit, and we go back out and do the search for free. We bring another group of candidates to you. And we have never charged extra for that. So we put that in there, but we would never charge you an additional fee without discussing it with you first, and we never have charged that fee in the history of our being in business.
And the fee that each charge includes the advertising? Or is that addition?
Yes, it's all-inclusive. So it covers everything except for the candidate's travel expenses. And the travel expenses, when we when we tell them that they've been selected as a finalist, we always send them a copy of your travel policy. So whatever travel costs they incur will be in line with with your city's policy.
All right, and you said Steve could tell us a little bit about the, what was it?
The search.
Yes.
I didn't quite catch that. What was that?
He said that perhaps Steve could tell us a little bit about the question about search in Miami-Dade.
Yes, I can. We recently conducted that search. We we hired the deputy operations chief for the city or for the county, I guess, of Miami-Dade. It's a very laborious process. We went through, and they actually hired a very good candidate. They went through several candidates. We had seven to nine applicants, which they took, and they interviewed also, and it ended up very successful. And what we do is, once we get the the contract, we will actually meet with each of you, either virtually or personally. We will find what you're looking for, and that's real important. Then we will actually advertise, and we'll go out, we'll look at our file repository, because we have lots of names and people in there, and that's what we did for Miami-Dade. And I was able to get about 20 additional people that were really well qualified for that position. And that job, I mean, it was really high-paying. It paid up to $350,000 a year, so you can see that it was a big job. But they're very happy. They hired a lady out of Knoxville, and she'll do a good job for them.
What position was that, Steve?
The Deputy Chief Operations Officer.
For Miami-Dade County or City Mike?
Miami-Dade. Miami-Dade County, I'm sorry. But the mayor had to make the final approval.
Yes, sir.
What was the makeup of the of the replies for you, where were most of them from Miami-Dade County? Just out of curiosity.
No, sir, we received a few from Miami-Dade County. There was actually one internal candidate who received applications from all over the country. And then what we do is we'll go through those based upon what you tell us in our interviews with you, and then we'll try to sort that out and find what the ones that are going to give you what you want. And then we will go through and we'll do a initial vetting process. I'll actually do a personal interview of those candidates. I will do a preliminary internet check to see if there's anything out there that shouldn't be. I just eliminated one candidate in another area because I found a a charge in there that I wasn't comfortable with. We will do that automatically before you even see the people. And then we will take the final group. It's usually six to eight to 10. And we will get those to you along with a comprehensive background check, and we do the best in the business. I mean, we do everything, and you'll know everything from stem to stern on any applicant that we recommend to you. And then you can look at those, and we'll be glad to communicate with you, and you can narrow that down to the people you'd want to bring in. Usually, they bring in three people, and they they do a meet and greet, and they do personal interviews and collective interviews. And they allow the public to talk to those people, and then you as a constituent, or you as a elected official, would talk to your constituents and see what they have to say, and then you can make the selection from there, and it works really, really well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Just, I just wanted to let the council know. The consultant provided a presentation about me, and I hope we've gotten to ten minutes.
Yes, I was going to say, we have the others.
Okay, there's still like two minutes left. If you carry over their presentation time, but I just wanted to give you a gauge of where you were.
Yes, I I think unless we have something. Yes, go ahead. Sorry, one more question. Is there a payment schedule here by phase, or is this low sum upfront?
There is on the fee and warranty page. It breaks down. It'll, phase one is X amount of dollars, phase two. So at the end of each phase, we will bill you that amount. So you're just paying a little bit along the way. But that schedule is mapped out in our proposal on the fee and warranty page.
Linnell, I may answer one last thing, also, to make the, make them comfortable that Colin will be involved in this process. He's involved in every process. I mean, he can't be here tonight, but he's in everything. He has, he can't take his fingers off the off the pulse. But I've been a city manager, an assistant city manager, a director of finance, an engineer, and been in charge of a utility company, and Colin's very similar. He's, he's been the same thing. So we know what it takes to be in this business and what you're looking for. And after we interview you, we'll know exactly what you're looking for.
Thank you so much, Linnell and Steve. We really appreciate it. Appreciate your time and and your the information and the answers to your questions. Okay, so we're going to move forward with the next firm.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for your consideration, and we do hope to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linnell. Thank you, Linnell.
Yeah, yes. All right, welcome, uh, Jim and Heidi. Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate your time and your interest. Um, I'll let you go ahead and get started telling you, telling us about the firm.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, we do have just a a very quick um presentation to share, so I'll just put that up if that's all right. And I assume everyone can see that. Um, so thank you again so much for having us this evening. My name is Heidi Voorhees. I'm the president and co-owner of GovHRUSA. And I'm joined tonight um by with uh Jim Deneen, who's a vice president. He's um, I'll let him introduce himself. He's not too far from you there in Florida. I'm a little further away up in Chicago, but I'll turn it over to Jim to introduce himself and then I'll say a couple of words about the firm.
Thank you and good evening. I'd be the team lead for this project. I've got forty-four years in public management, twenty-two years either a city or county manager. Uh, most recently in Florida, I served for twelve and a half years as the county manager in Volusia County, which is in the Daytona Beach area. I retired in June of uh two thousand eighteen and was happy to join GovHR in um two thousand nineteen. Uh, one little thing I can mention, I live north, less than uh four hours away by car. And if selected, I could meet in person when interviewing the council members if they would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And just very quickly, because I know your time is uh tight this evening, but we, our firm has been in business since two thousand nine. Uh, we have done more than twelve hundred recruitment and selection processes in forty-two different states, including Florida. We've done about thirty-six processes in Florida, and I'll show you that in just a minute. But we believe very strongly in a partnership with our clients um and that we have mutual trust. And we will give you our honest assessment of candidates and we want you to to be as open as possible with us regarding the challenges and opportunities in your community. And this just gives you an idea of where our consultants are located. And I think it's important, we have a national firm, but we always have a local focus and we'll we'll tell you a little bit more about that in just a minute. But this allows us to be aware of candidates that are available across the country. And it's important, I think, to do a national recruitment because you never know. In a lot of cases, somebody wants to come home. They may have started their career in Florida and then decided that they want to come back. So that was a little bit about Jim. And I wanted to also tell you about a core value of our firm, which is our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion and also belonging. Uh, we have been active in in fulfilling this goal and this objective since our firm's inception. Uh, Joellen Katamatori and I, we we co-own the business and we have supported and been involved with a number of organizations. Uh, we actually have a contractual partnership with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators and we do uh projects with them. We do consulting projects. And I'm a founding member of the state, the state of Illinois Local Government Hispanic Network Chapter. And we've been active with that organization on a national level and also with the League of Women in Government. So these are organizations that we've been involved with since the inception of our firm. We support them with our time and with and and financially as well. Just to give you uh some examples, this is some of the examples of recruitments that we've done in Florida. And I I have shared this um PowerPoint presentation with your uh HR director, so you have it if you want to refer to it later. Um, as I mentioned, we've done uh thirty-six recruitments in Florida, including six executive positions in Pinellas County and two executive positions in Orlando, in addition to the ones that are listed here. Just a little bit about our process. Uh, we do believe it's very important to understand your organization, what you are seeking in your next leader. Uh, as Jim said, he'd be available to be onsite with you. Uh, the first thing that we will do is work with you on a calendar so that you understand when you're getting our deliverables. And then Jim would be there to work on, to listen to what you have to say, as well as key stakeholder interviews. And there's a variety of ways that we've been able to get uh stakeholder feedback through both, we've done focus groups, surveys, uh town halls, individual interviews, um, all of the above. So we are very um comfortable in all of those spaces. And that helps us understand not only your um, what what some of your challenges are, but also the culture. Because organizational culture is key in finding the right candidates to lead you through the next several years. Um, we have a strong social media presence and we use it heavily to reach out to potential candidates. Uh, we have about fourteen thousand visits to our website a month. Uh, we will develop a database of potential candidates to reach out to. And we do that both via email, telephone, personal contact. And we have a um software program on LinkedIn that we that we've purchased. And we can search every LinkedIn profile using keywords. So if there's certain things that you're seeking in this position, we can use that system to help us identify additional candidates. We do interview, we do live video interviews with prospective candidates. Uh, we conduct background inquiries and reference calls on those candidates before we present them to you. And if you are interested in seeing all of the resumes, we are your partner in this process. We don't hold anything back. It's it's totally up to you. And we will provide you with any additional information that we found on the candidates with respect to their media presence. Um, Jim would work with you on identifying candidates for interview. We will draft questions for you. We will be onsite. Uh, you can modify the questions and we will work with you on that. As I've said throughout this presentation, it's a partnership. And we will provide, our goal is to provide you with information to make an informed decision. Um, we really feel that we have a solid track record of working closely with our clients. Um, we're known for our commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. We're also known for our professional commitment to local government management. Uh, and as Jim said, he's been a professional local government leader. I have as well. I spent nineteen years in local government, ten years as a city manager. So we certainly understand the challenges and we're very active in the profession. So we and we know who the up and comers are. We know who the established candidates are. And it would be our pleasure to work with you on identifying candidates for your next city manager position. And this is just some of the things that I've already told you. Um, we do have a very high success rate. Uh, we offer a guarantee of one year. If for any reason the person leaves, uh, we will come back and do the recruitment uh for no consulting fee, just for the advertising expenses. Um, our process takes about ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So we would work with you on that calendar so that you're ready to appoint uh somewhere between the ninetieth and hundred and twentieth day. So I want to um stop at this point and Jim and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Heidi and Jim for the presentation. Any questions? Yes, sir. Councilman Best?
Heidi, Councilman Best here. Um, I I, you you made a statement early in your presentation that your firm feels that it's important to conduct a national search. Why do you say that?
Well, I, for a couple of reasons. First of all, it doesn't cost you anymore to do a national search. And the second reason is you never know who wants to come home. And we have seen this happen over and over and over again, that somebody may start their career in Florida. Then they may leave, they may go to North Carolina or Georgia or somewhere else, and then they will decide that they want to come back. Um, it is absolutely true that most recruitments are regional. And most of the candidates will likely come from uh from your, the greater area, from your greater region. Uh, but you never know, you want to be able to capture that person who maybe grew up in your area, has a career in local government and wants to come back.
I could answer. Um, one other question, like my, um, I know on your uh resume, if you will, or or the state of Florida, the majority of your landings of of city managers have been in the area of uh, oh, anywhere's, let's say, from eighty-three thousand up to a hundred and thirty-one thousand, a hundred and eight thousand. Or a city of fourteen to fifty thousand people. Is there a difference in how you would look at that?
Um, it not really. Um, I think, you know, the community that I was the manager of was twenty-five thousand, so I I and we work with the communities of all sizes. We're very comfortable with communities that are your size. So I don't see any problem in us being able to adapt at all. Um, it's really the, it's it's really the same process. There may be fewer stakeholder groups than if it's in a very large city. Uh, but I, we we do this size, we work with the size of a city all the time.
Thank you very much, Heidi.
Any other questions? Um, could you tell me uh with the background search that you do on the candidates? How extensive is it initially or is that something that we continue later when we kind of decide on someone just?
Sure. Well, the first thing we do is a Google search of and look at at the top two hundred um times the person is mentioned. So we are gonna look at that before, um, that that will be going on right in the beginning and many, we, while we have someone trained on staff to do that, many of our consultants also do it while they're looking at potential candidates. So we do that to start with. Uh, we also, it it's really an ongoing process throughout the recruitment. So initially, we want to know what kind of media is out there, what kind of social media is out there on the candidate. We ask them if we've identified them as someone who we think could be a viable candidate. We also, we have some paperwork that we ask them to complete. We ask certain questions in that paperwork about, you know, whether or not they've ever had had civil rights violations filed against them, those kinds of things. These are all appropriately legal questions to ask. It gives them the opportunity to tell us if there's anything in their background that we should be aware of, but we also verify. So in it, after, then we do do reference calls on the candidates before we present them to you. So we've done the media search, we've done the social media search, we've given them the opportunity to disclose anything. We provide that information to you. And then once you pick the candidates to interview, then there's a much deeper background check. Uh, where we look at, you know, we verify their license, you know, that as that they've given us, verify their education. Uh, do a felony and misdemeanor background check according to law in wherever they've lived or worked. So it's all, you know, different states have different laws about how far back you can go. And we, of course, adhere to those. Uh, but in the in the public sector, because if if somebody's spent their career in the public sector and something has occurred longer ago than maybe is allowed to check, that may pop up just because it's a media issue. So we would provide you with all of that information. And it's a full, uh, it's a full background check, Interpol, you know, FBI, the whole thing.
And that's uh when we selected who it is that we want to interview before.
Correct. Correct, because it does require sign-offs from them. And a number of people freeze their um, they'll freeze their credit because they're concerned about um, you know, they maybe have had some fraud, not fraud that they've committed, but they've had fraud committed against them. So we have to get that unfrozen. So sometimes it's a process to get that um, report done. And so that's why we wait until the very end. And very rarely does anything come up, but it comes up. It does happen for sure.
Heidi, one more quick question for you. If we were to accept a candidate of your firm, um, let's say from Colorado or Minnesota or Mississippi or wherever, would the city be expected to compensate them for relocating expenses? What's been your uh your track record on that?
Yes, I mean, that is typical, though that's something that can always be discussed. I mean, you could, Florida's a big state. You could have someone from another part of the state who also is a successful candidate and would need to relocate to be closer. And that, it is very typical that the city uh pays relocation expenses. Now, there's a couple of things you can do to protect yourself, and I would recommend it, that you can have a clawback provision in the agreement with the candidate. So if they leave within a certain amount of time, they have to pay those expenses back. Uh, you know, I, and and you can cap them and so that you've controlled those expenses. So it is typical that the community pays for that, but it's also, there are also ways to protect yourself.
Thank you, Heidi. Thanks very much.
Any other questions? Heidi, uh, could you give me an idea for um, for our situation? Do you expect that we'll find um the the right person locally from, you know, Florida and what I mean is Florida or South Florida or nationally in your experience?
Well, I'll let Jim weigh in, but I I would think that the majority of your candidates are going to come from the southeast. Um, that or have some strong connection to Florida, because that's what we see typically. Um, and it, so that wouldn't, that would not surprise me if the vast majority of the candidates came from either Florida or other communities or other states that touch Florida. I don't know. What are you seeing, Jim?
I would say that the majority will probably be from Florida. But as Heidi said, don't get surprised. There are people that have moved, have families in Florida and moved somewhere else. Maybe they went to college someplace and start working that are looking to relocate. The other thing it has, you will get candidates from across the country. The real key there is the better run your community is, the more stable you are, the longer your manager's been there. The more opportunity you're gonna get people that are willing to consider relocating if it's the right job. Uh, you know, in other words, there are a lot of good candidates out there, but when they see the ad, they may not be looking for a job, but they're looking for the right opportunity. And if they feel you are, you know, Florida's not a bad place to to locate or relocate to. Now, what we do look for is, we're not interested in anyone wanting to come here to retire. But, you know, let's not kid ourselves, it's a beautiful place to locate. If you have the right reputation, there are people, especially at certain points in their career, where they're interested in maybe making a move. And they have, you know, they may have the right background for you.
And we really do question people about their reasons for why they're, and then we, and we do it like this. So it's in person, it's not just in writing. We want to know why they want to, why they're applying for this position, what interests them about it. Um, how serious are they about the opportunity? Um, all of that, we spend quite a bit of time on that so that we really have a sense of of why they would be applying for this position.
Um, I have one more question. In general, in your experience, uh, how many candidates do you think you'll uh likely get for us or recruit for us for us to interview? Or how many do you do you like to have?
Well, yeah, I think right now, depending on, um, you know, it depends on a few things, depends on compensation. It looks like you've been, uh, you know, your position has been stable, your last manager was promoted from within. Uh, and had a good, had a good time period there. You're not rolling through managers every year, so that always helps a great deal to have that stability that Jim referred to. Um, I I would say somewhere between thirty-five and fifty candidates, Jim, would be.
Yeah, easily, uh, easily.
Yeah, ease and and they're not, you know, a lot of them are not going to be qualified. It's, it's pretty shocking what, you know, some people who apply for these jobs, it's it's surprising. But, you know, maybe twenty will be, at least meet the minimum qualifications. And then we check the, you know, the media, we check their social media, we we interview them. And usually it narrows down to ten, eight to ten, maybe, that are really strong. And we we can prepare a matrix for you that, you know, shows why each candidate, you know, that we interviewed, what they were strong in, based on the types of things that you tell us you're interested in. And that's really the crux of the recruitment is listening to you, what you want to see, what challenges your community is facing and what you need in these candidates. And so that's how we evaluate them is based on that converse, those series of conversations that we have with you. Um, and then you will all decide how many you want to interview and we can help you with that.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, so we're, I, are there any other questions?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, um, Heidi and Jim, thank you very, very much. We greatly appreciate your interest in uh doing service for us and uh your time.
Well, thank you, and, and let us know if you have other questions. We'd love to have the opportunity to work with you and we wish you much success.
All right. So the next firm is the Mercer Group, and they have one representative, Donna Pickenbottom. Is she on?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Hi Donna, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening, good evening. How are you?
Very, very good. Thank you for being here. We appreciate, um, your time and your interest. Um, I'll let you get started.
Well, I thank you for inviting me this evening. I know that you've heard from two other firms this evening, and they are both ve- very well qualified to meet your needs as a city. I'm here to tell you that we're all going to be doing the same thing. We're going to be meeting with each of you individually on your schedule. I'm located in Daytona Beach, so I can come in person to meet with you. I will meet at, on your schedule, whether you want to meet in person, by the phone, on a Zoom call, at your convenience. I know all of you have very busy schedules as well. We're, as I said, we all do the same thing. The only thing I do differently is I stay in Florida. I focus on Florida. I'm very selective about the cities that I work with. And most of my cities that I work with have been based on referrals. As you can see, I recently commit, completed a village manager's search for a neighboring village of Palmetto Bay, Palmetto Bay. Um, just two weeks ago, I completed the search for the beautiful city of Key West. We had forty-four applicants from thirteen states. I narrowed it down to nine recommendations for further consideration. And an advisory committee recommended five to the commission for in-person interviews. And on February fifteenth, they selected their new city manager, who was recently at the city of Doral. At this time, I have no other city, um, recruitments going on for city manager. I do not overload myself. I will be the one that you will be dealing with. I do contract out a few services. I have someone that works with me on the internet research that you will get with my recommendations for further consideration. And I have a firm that I work with that will conduct a comprehensive background check on each of the finalists that you will be bringing to the city of Miami Springs. That includes their educational background, their educational verification, their criminal history for local, state, and federal, their reference checks, their credit checks, um, all of their background that you could ask for. I will be recommending six to eight for further consideration. And then you will narrow it down for the ones that you wish to bring to Miami Springs. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, Councilor, go ahead.
Uh, Donna, what, what is your background? Uh, to your, uh, do you have any experience of city managerial level, though, within government?
I do not have city manager experience. However, my late husband was a city manager for thirty-two years. So I know the inside and the outside world from that. I was in another industry in recruiting and training for over thirty years. And in two thousand and ten, when my late husband retired from his last city, I started out Mercer Group Florida. And we had our own recruiting firm.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Dest?
Good evening, Donna. Councilman Dest here.
Good evening.
I, I, I note that, um, you are quite extensively placing people all over the state of Florida. And your, your charge is to set apart, is to set, so you appear to be pretty successful in that area. Um, you mentioned, uh, Palmetto Bay and Key West, but also the city of Palatka recently placed manager. That's a city with, uh, slightly less than population than the city of Miami Springs. I'm going to ask you, uh, as I asked the others, do you feel that to place a manager in a city that has a light city budget and light population is a key factor in your search, uh, criteria?
I'm going to be looking for those candidates that have like experience. They, um, for population, for budget-wise, I want to find that individual that meets your needs specifically. As you mentioned, I have worked with various sized cities, including recently the city of Fort Myers. And I will do the same work for smaller cities as I do a city of the size of Fort Myers.
Thank you, Donna. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Um, Donna, I have a few, um, what, how, how would you advertise this position?
I advertise nationally, statewide, Florida League of Cities. I have social media. Um, we have a Facebook page, we have Twitter, LinkedIn, Instagram. So I send blasts out to all of those social media sites as well as ICMA.
And do you have any policy to deal with should we hire, um, someone of, you know, one of the persons that, um, that you bring for the interview and it doesn't work out within the first year?
Absolutely. I have a policy, as you can see in my brief proposal, that if the candidate leaves for any reason within the first twelve months, I will conduct the search for expenses only, which would be advertising expenses and bringing the candidates in again.
And, uh, the background search that you would do, when do you do the background search? At what point?
I do an internet search prior to any recommendations that I will make to you. And then typically, I will only do the comprehensive background search on your three to five finalists that you wish to bring to the city for your in-person interviews. If you wish to have the comprehensive background on the six to eight candidates of my recommendation, I will be more than happy to do that for you.
To the chair?
Yes.
I have two questions. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, so on your guarantees, I have a question for number two and number six. So number two says two-year off limit, who will not recruit candidates from a client organization for two-year after completion of a search assignment without the full agreement of the client. Can you elaborate on that?
So that means that even if I have a city that I feel some, your new, new city manager would be interested in, I'm not going to reach out to them. I'm not going to say, hey, you know, I, I've got a city in the Panhandle of Florida that is looking for a new city manager. And I know that you mentioned in my interview with you that you would ultimately like to relocate to the Panhandle. But if it's within that two-year limit, I'm, I'm not going to touch them.
So to pig, okay, so to piggyback on that, I just want, I was a little bit concerned with the turnaround, if that's an option. So I don't want, I don't want to be worried about every two year, have to find a new city manager.
Understood, understood. No city wants to be looking for a new city manager every two years.
And then number six is, um, parallel candidate presentation. Who will not present the candidates simultaneously to more than one client. This permits our firms to open that one client organization without conflicts of interest. Can you hear that a little bit?
Absolutely. As I just told you, I do not take on five or six searches at the same time. So had I not just completed Key West, that item number six would indicate that I would not present that candidate to Key West and to Miami Springs at the same time. I'm not going to present the same candidate in multiple locations.
Thank you. Um, so I guess I have a follow-up question with that.
Okay.
So is that whatever candidate is already, you has been looking for, for another city and, uh, while they're in the interview process, they wouldn't be brought for consideration in front of us?
I will not present them to two cities at the same time. I would either present them to you, Miami Springs, or to the other city. But I'm not going to get into a bidding war, you know, presenting the same candidate in multiple cities at the same time.
And Donna, um, I think you mentioned initially that, uh, that you only looked low, uh, in Florida, but you said that you advertised nationally?
I do. Because you never know who, at this point, everyone wants to move to Florida. You know that. Um, we have a great state. And I, I believe that the figure is there's a thousand people a day moving to the state of Florida for many reasons. There may be a spouse, spouse who is taking a new job here. And then the other spouse has been the city manager somewhere. So I open it up nationally.
To the chair, please, this one. Donna, right, um, in, uh, going back to the guarantees on our, is a two-year off limit negotiable to extend it further out in three or four years?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again?
Under guarantees, number two, the two-year off limit, would we be able to negotiate that in three or four years?
Of course. Yes.
Donna, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate your interest in doing the service for us and, um, and your time tonight.
Thank you. I look forward to partnering with the beautiful city of Miami Springs.
Thank you.
On the off?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I know.
Yeah, okay. If, if they want to listen to the rest of the meeting, they're welcome.
So do you guys have any more questions for them?
I'm not at this point, I don't, they're on. If they wanted to be here to discuss, certainly there's no requirement.
We're still on YouTube, I think.
Because I don't, I don't know if that, I don't, I don't know if that would appropriate.
But it's a couple of meetings and they can't.
I mean, they could, if you wanted to.
Okay, but if we do need to reach out to them, that's right, you know, to any one of the special people. Okay, so there's anyone, do we need some time in this, you know, individually to get some thought, or do we just want to get into it? I.
Well, this is a workshop, so I don't know. We're not. So, uh, I guess we could vote on it if we wanted to. Um, I, I personally would like to wait to, yeah. A lot of our, our constituents listen to this. Uh, like to be able to get input from other people that have listened to this. Uh, so I, I, I don't think that I'd like to vote on this right now. I, maybe the, the next, the next meeting for sure. But, uh, and I, and of course, I'd like the first company to get back with my questions. That's it. I want, on, on those.
And the next meeting would be Monday?
That's right. I think that, that's, that, that would be perfectly fine. I'd be perfectly comfortable with that. Uh, that would give us time to do whatever, to think about it, have any, if we have any other questions, we can also always ask them. And, uh, and to vote on it on, on Monday. I, I think you shouldn't rush into it today.
I do think we should discuss tonight, though, because I think just leaving it till Monday to discuss, there's a lot of others, so.
Sure. I mean, I, so I'm just gonna tell you what I think. Feel like even if the first, the firm had great answers, I feel like it's, that they're, they're kind of price. Their search involved, you know, I think some events, hosting events for all candidates. And I just feel like, I'm looking at the price tag, uh, and to me, I feel like it's a, it's a choice between the GHR, USA, and Mercer Group. Uh, uh, I mean, I like that, uh, the Mercer Group has got some cities like Fort Myers, and Palmetto Bay, and Key West. And they're, uh, you know, she is more local, although I feel like she's kind of like a one-man, uh, band. And the GHR, although they're national, I, uh, I just, I came away with, uh, the, uh, the, the team that spoke to us, I just, uh, it struck me that they, it seems like they're a big company. They got a lot of, uh, experience doing it. And I, and I feel like they have experienced people that are going to be the consultants working. Because people are had managerial, uh, experience within municipalities. Uh, so to me, even though it's a national company, they work in Florida, uh, I believe, and it's, it's a thousand dollars more expensive than the least. They're, they're second most expensive. And they're fourteen thousand dollars less expensive than the first firm. So to me, I feel like, uh, you know, it's GHR first, Mercer second. Uh, and I also think, like, I'm, I don't know, it, I mean, again, you asked a question, and I think it was a very valid question, right? And, and if, if I were considering them more, I'd want to know the answer. I just feel like they're priced out, even if they have a great answer. I don't, I prefer not to be, I feel like it's already going to be a tight turnaround. And we're talking about like needing to, needing to appoint an internal if we can't get this done in time. And I don't know how much public input, uh, we have to, I mean, we're, we're picking a search firm that's going to interview us about what our needs are. I, I feel like it's, it's, it's embedded, uh, Bill brought these to us in her presentations. I feel like if we can have consensus on who to, who we like, it's not that many to pick from. I feel like we should just go with it, uh, and, and maybe to vote on something nice, we get the process going. I don't want to wait anymore because, uh, because of the time trip.
Cool. Councilman Dest?
To the chair, uh, to your point first, um, I, I, I think this is a well-advertised meeting. Obviously, we have people in the chambers. Um, so, uh, to allow additional time to discuss with the residents, I have discussed already with all the residents. Probably have as well. Um, I, again, I don't have a problem with waiting till, till next week. Now, I, I have a tendency to agree at this point, if the council had, we should at least give direction to at least, but again, uh, I'm not going to be here. You guys are going to ultimately make this decision. Uh, and I'd like to see you get off and run to where I'm at, you know? And, and, and keep well off and running, uh, to, uh, to put a decent city manager in, so as not to affect Williams, uh, compromise Williams' time in the city instead of the area. Um, and then twelve weeks into the average, what I'm seeing here, what Phil gave us and the other research that I've done here. Now, to the P, to the, to the members of, but to the, to the, the corporations that have been afraid to have a slum and dropped out. Basically, I think it's just a little bit too big for, just my thought. Um, I was a little bit taken by what their opening statement was relative to the worst thing you.
the worst thing you, the worst possible trade is to perform poor background check. Isn't that kind of elementary for anybody that's of any constitution in this business? Obviously, they're not, they're not going to do a poor background check. So that kind of got me off, and then thirty-one states, I mean, who knows how many they got going right now, how many eggs they have in their basket. Um, I just think they're a little too big for our, for our needs. GovHR, um, most of their managers that they've landed, according to everything I've read here, have been cities well out of our size range. That's why I kept asking that question, as to as to our population and our budget. Because that's what we're about. We're not about, uh, not about Gainesville or Lakeland or anything like that. It's, that's ridiculous as far as I'm concerned with people that somebody that status or and plus the price tag could be clearly out of our league. So that's why, that's why I, uh, I am sort of leaning to, uh, I did like the one point that, that GovHR made about partnership with clients. I did like that statement. I thought that was, that was good. And also the importance for a national search. I don't think that's necessarily out of the question. Though we would have to, guys would have to consider relocation expenses, et cetera, et cetera. Goes to the price tag of, of process. But that happens later. I'm sure that's a field that we have to cut with potential capital to finish. I thought their answer on relocation is a good one. If you could, if you had a CYA that ourselves in terms of language in the contract whereby we would be protected. So that goes to the Mercer Group. One thing I liked about the Mercer Group is that we're going to get we're, we're horse blinders, you know, blinders on. They're going to pay, she's not going to take on any other job except for us. I also like the fact that she landed three key cities which are in light of our population. Namely, Meadow Bay, Key West and Malacca. Um, and I read that thing on Key West, but I could do further research on that. They just, they just hired a, that city manager about. That city manager is in place right now. Um, I, I'd like the idea of, um, of their, uh, again, of their custom tailored approach. I think we would get that. They do advertise nationally. I, I, she was the only firm that brought up uh interaction with the Florida Liberty Cities. I like that, too. I like that. And also social media. Social media, she blew a couple of dollars away, but she's been on and on and on about social media that the other one. I think it was HR locked in on LinkedIn. Oh, I don't think that's the, she did LinkedIn and the other, just bought it over and almost, that's fine. I also like the, the question, the Council of Bravo, but the response to Council of Bravo's question about the guarantee. I like, I like her answer. Uh, that, that would be protected, that the, the fact that they wouldn't go duplicit to other cities with the same candidate. I like that. So I think out of all of them, right now, I'm leaning toward the Mercer Group. And in, in addition, uh, their price, they're not the, the most expensive, and they're not the least, well, at the moment, they're the least.
Give it Slavin left.
Yeah, give it Slavin out of the picture. They are the least expensive right now. That, that would be my vote for this evening anyway, in terms of everything. I've heard all the questions that my colleagues have brought up, the post. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, yes, I'm also leaning towards the Mercer Group. I like trying to do this position for charity. All of these companies are pretty much offering the same things, but I also see that they're very well in tune for Florida and have hired throughout many, many cities. So I think maybe to our culture uh, as far as the Florida aspect, actually, that their government, um, HR, they had about six, which were not even anywhere close to South Florida. The majority of their business is Illinois, Wisconsin. Like I see a, their major bulk of, of recruitment. So I do want, uh, I do want a recruiting firm that has somewhat of a sense of, of South Florida culture, because it, it all plays a big role. I love the exclusivity. Um, I can tell you as a business owner, there's nothing better than to be able to assist one client at a time if you can, because their focus is you and they have all the time to just listen to you, whatever they want. It's very cute. And I think that, that's a really quality, uh, especially, um, when they're not overwhelmed, like these, these big companies that just have a lot going on. There's no way that they can be scared to go to big customer. Uh, the fact that they're willing to negotiate on terms toward development is, is, it's nice and adorable. For me, uh, yeah, I agree for the Mercer Group as well.
Yeah, ma'am, I'm, I'm good with both. I mean, to me, it was like one A, one B, but uh, I'm happy with, with, uh, with what I heard from Mercer Group also. Two of my colleagues are on board. I'm on board with, with Mercer. And again, I, I would favor maybe if we can find consensus, uh, moving forward of this.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I um, you got consensus as far as not with mercy. I mean, if they, uh, they would, and I think the key thing, one of the key things is, like Councilman Best brought up, is that we're going to get her undivided attention. Nobody else is, is gonna, is not going to take on anybody until we're done. And, and that's what it sounds like to me. So I think that's, that's kind of important for us. Uh, although like one of the, one of the things I liked about GovHR was the fact that they had, uh, the people that were going to work on, on with us had experience in going. That was, that was kind of, that was kind of interesting. That was a, that was a good point for me uh, as far as that's concerned. But uh, Mercer, I, I think it's very important that we get, that, that we get undivided attention. And I think we would with that.
And my initial thoughts before the presentations were that the, the one that looked like they, the cities closest geographically to us, demographically to us, was the Mercer Group. Before I'd even heard any of the presentations. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
You know why I was wrong? Before I even opened up any, I just looked at what, uh, Phil Davis.
Yeah, yeah.
I looked at that real quick and I said, Basinger's, Basinger's ahead. Basinger's ahead. And I was quickly, I might quickly changed.
Well, let me just, I'll throw some things out there and then I think we have motion. I, uh, agree with Councilman Benhead. I don't see a reason to wait. I don't, you know, residents are interested in this. They could be here. Um, this is something that, uh, you know, we need to move on. Uh, to tell you the truth, all three firms, I think they're very good. It's, they're hard choices. There's not, I, you know, and it's hard, we don't know them personally, other than what we've had today, but they're all good choices. I guess the only thing I would throw out is, um, I don't want to concentrate too much on the cost of, which is the cheapest because, you know, ultimately, if you look at the bottom, maximum, because some have search fee, but then some have expenses depending on expenses. So when you put all out, the, the difference between the three of us, ten thousand dollars, which is ten thousand dollars is a lot of money. But when we're talking about getting the right person for the job and getting an interview of, you know, five, six people that, you know, are all really well qualified, I don't think that that is something we should consider. So I just want to say, let's not consider it, at least personally, on the money. I'm not saying that that are going for the more expensive one, but, um, that should be. This, what I will mention is that I did like, and I, and I like the Mercer Group, and I, and for all the reasons that I've already been stating, so I am perfectly fine with them. The only thing with the other two is that, um, when a company has more people searching, you're likely to have more connections. So when we're going with the Mercer Group, which seems to be the one-person show, and I'm sure she's very qualified, but it really comes down to how many connections she has. Whereas with the others, um, you have professionals who are recruiters, who, you know, work with each other and, you know, I have someone here and all this, so I, I get the personal touch, but I also think that, you know, I have several professionals in, in the recruitment group. And I guess Colin Besenter, it seems like there are three. GovHR, I'm unsure, it's two, at least two. But that said, that's not a site, um, uh, I do think they're all very good groups of very high qualified. Thank you, Bill, for bringing them to us. I know there was a lot of work done just in preparing that and getting them, so, um, I'll accept the motion.
To the chair, a motion to vote for the Council to select the Mercer Group's search city manager.
Any more discussion? Yes.
So, ma'am, council, on your agenda, you have a resolution to select, in this case, the Mercer Group for executive search services. What I would like to be able to add in is what the not-to-exceed amount of that contract would be. Uh, I think we're being consistent with their proposal, but I just want to confirm that. Twenty-three thousand five hundred is the not-to-exceed. And then what we'll do is also attached, um, there's a few links, obviously, if they want to, the Council, if they select the expense, we'll go ahead and fill those in. That it's attached to also have professional services agreement between, it's our standard professional services agreement. So we'll go ahead and fill that in, and attached to that will be the proposal. Um, I know that Councilwoman Bravo reported to you to negotiate the point on, um, the Mercer Groups. Item number two, the two-year off limits, you wanted that increased to four? Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and make sure that we include that there in an updated proposal or just clarify it in the terms.
And then, and maybe I believe the, the question that we asked about the, uh, guarantee, I guess, if the person departs within a year, is that in there?
She does have that in here. I think it's, I think it's number five. If the candidate we placed for the client leaves the organization party during the twelve-month period following the date of placement, we will replace the candidate for other companies. So that's already in there, in their proposal.
To the chair, so Heidi, you're looking for my risk, for my, for my motion, hopefully to include the dollar amount not to exceed, don't you hear?
That's fine.
Okay, the, the dollar amount to amend my, my voting. Mercer Group, for a dollar amount not to exceed, not to exceed twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which, which includes an additional four thousand dollars not to exceed, which covers the round travel and hotel for anyone, you know?
That's, that's already included in the twenty-five.
Yes, not to exceed.
We'll, we'll go ahead and finalize. We, we negotiated this agreement in the past with Mercer Group on, on other cities. So I don't anticipate that there will be too much back and forth on the actual agreement. But you are approving the agreement with them in substantial parts.
And also, to the chair, to include Councilman Bravo's, um, thanks for the four years.
Done.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the other discussion with the relocation and all that, that would be separate. That would be something that we do when we talk to them as to what we want. So that does nothing to do with our agreement. Uh, one other thing, just when we were talking, oh, the, the length of the search, the day, how long the search takes, I think. I don't know if it was Colin, did, do they have?
Mercer Group, uh, advertised twelve weeks.
Are those timeframes that are in their proposal?
They may be, maybe flexible.
So I, I think that, I think that, that, that's something that we can discuss afterwards as, as part of, you know, once we get into the nitty-gritty.
Yeah, you can see twelve weeks, but they don't bring anybody for us. Oh, absolutely. And the agreement already does provide for an extension if needed. So if I'm a great issue, see you much.
Can I, so, no, there.
Well, no.
Councilwoman Bravo's in the second.
You got a second?
Yes, I'll save them. Yeah.
I'll discuss it. This is, this is kind of not.
It has nothing to do with vote. Well, go ahead.
I'm, I'm right.
You decide.
No, thank you. To the chair, uh, since the manager is higher than note to us, indicated that the director of the management is ten or eleven, I would hope, and that's, of course, it's up to her, but that she would be interviewed by whatever group to be someone as well. Does anybody that they would bring, that be with your, it was.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, that's okay. Absolutely, yes. And I just wanted to clarify that if there's someone here locally in South Florida that's interested in the position, um, they would how would that, how would that work?
Ultimately, you're in control. So you're the, you're the client. So if you tell your consultant, you want to interview this person, like apart from whatever record they, you can do that and other. Sure. If you have any specific people that say we absolutely want to do this regardless, you know, maybe they'll, you know, they'll, they'll, uh, I think the next step really is to bring her, maybe, I don't know, tonight or, or next Monday, I suppose, to bring her, bring her back, then she, what is that?
I think the next step would be she point, once we have the contract in place, what I understood, she will be in contact with each of you individually to discuss what your wants, needs, et cetera are.
William Alonso is safe. My man's over there watching a ballgame.
Is there any more discussion? All of them, please. Thanks, Parlo.
Hi.
Councilman Best.
Hi.
Councilman Bravo, yes, Councilman Bennett.
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Um, I think, do we have to do something with the results?
No, you'll just approve it.
Okay, okay. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you for the go.
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask, what are we doing about the other position that he has?
It's advertised.
It is. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, good point.
City.
And I'll list you, uh, Phil, from you and, um, no, that's going, not going.
Well, you know, we, I think we have one, one potential candidate that would be, would be excellent, you know, but, uh, we're, we're working on it. You know, it's, it's a difficult position. Uh, before, um, Mr. Slavin had drawn from the process, uh, he told me that finance director is a more difficult position to recruit than, uh, than city manager. So, uh, but we're making some, we, uh, within the last, uh, few days, we've had some promising lead on that, so.
Yeah, I was reading through the thing to the chair that is, I was reading through the theory. I happen to know that you just voted for Mercer. Mercer Group just landed a CFO as well as a city manager.
Okay.
Then, then I have a question. Um, if the finance director position, and I know that it is, and we've been very, very blessed to have such an exceptional finance director as a city manager on here, because they're very, very hard. Um, so, uh, with the group that we choose, and I guess we've chosen Mercer Group right now, is it something that we perhaps should consider if we're not successful in finding a finance director of, but, you know, what would they charge? They're already working with us to, I mean, does it have to be the whole amount again?
Well, obviously, if we're not able to do it successfully internally, yes, I would say we would, we would consider the next general improvement. But right now, I think, you know.
But could we, from all three times, I would like to know if, you know.
That consultancy would be with city staff, right? If we don't.
City manager points.
Right, the city managers.
He might need help finding someone, you know, it'd be the same thing. I mean, whether the person we interviews with us or with him, it's identifying, uh, someone who's qualified.
Mayor, I, I really think, it's, it's an excellent question. Um, I really think that they would be more than willing to bend over backwards to give us a very favorable rate to include a CFO in that, that search. If, if, if it comes to that, I mean, it's not there.
Tell you, there's, you know, a very, you know, uh, like I said, in the last few days, had a very promising opportunity of somebody that I think you'd be very impressed by. So let's hope that, uh, that that comes to fruition. There's, there's just somebody out there who, you know, is, is, is of the same caliber of, uh, Lee Plons, so, you know, somebody that.
What I can do is I, I'll class three, if you ask on Mercer. Do one, all three of you are discussing that.
But, you know, uh, if it becomes necessary, but you don't have to pay.
If I might, the only caveat to that, uh, I'd like, uh, I'd like it to be a quicker search for that.
Yes.
You know, it, because.
For that, you know, it, because I, he def, I wanted him definitely to have a, a, a say in, we're just gonna replace him.
He's gonna be on the verge of going into a budget.
Yeah, exactly, that's not, yeah, that's time, that's something, you know, so, yeah, I.
For the finance. Is the salary. You know, we've been talking about it, we, uh, we originally put a range, now we changed to that, and we put depending on qualification. It's gonna be a lot higher than what I, a lot higher. So, is that something, Heidi, that I would need to bring to Council? Uh, in order to increase the favoring collective?
I, I think that it is an appointment by the manager, but I think that. I don't know if a budget amendment's gonna be required for it.
Yeah, but you, you, you can't have a CFO more than the city manager, that's the other.
Well, you don't have a city manager.
No, no, I understand that, but let's say, let's say you find something.
And here we are, searching.
You know what, I said this from. Because, and I wanna clarify this for everyone who's listening, William has not received. Money, a payment, salary for being finance director, he was promoted to city manager, he was given the city manager position, he continued to act as our finance director. All these years, we have to receive compensation for it, so we're going to have serious sticker shopping, hiring a new department director as a, as a finance director. Plus a city manager, um, and, um, we've been very, very lucky for all the years.
So, should you guys, when they were bringing up raises for us, you know. Good conscience, I don't know how you do that, but it's time to do that, same time for doing all of it.
Uh, someone that we're really needing, I mean, would need us, but. Positions that we're doing is going to set us on a, on another level. Potentially, you know, reach sources that we haven't touched before, certainly. We gotta take that first step forward, and we're gonna see, I believe we're gonna see good results, and it'll be for itself, but.
Well, but what you need to know is as far as, you know, as far as. What you're saying, Bill, what you're saying is that the salary that we were considering as city manager, uh, uh, finance director for is unlikely.
Well, I know, yeah, I would say, um, initially, we, initially, we had the range down, um, I forget what exactly, you know, we were looking originally for. Maybe as low as a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but I can tell you that that's, that is probably not, you know, not even, it's not, not within the realm of, uh. Of realistic expectations, so, the, uh, the median, uh, you, you're gonna be looking around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. For a, for a finance, right, any mazes they hire, but, uh, that should be looking for maybe about a hundred and fifty, I think.
I do need, uh, vote on that as a.
Yeah, I think, well, I think, think the top end of the range we have in our, our pay plan, again, we just keep it in the pay plan, even though we. William has been performing that role, I think it's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in there, so that's what I think William's discussing, that it's. You know, we, we may need to offer somebody a hundred and fifty thousand, so you may need the, um, the permission of the, uh, of the city council.
I, I think, I, I think if, if you could, um. Uh, put something together for next week, so we can see it for sure, so we need to vote for it.
I think we're still working, okay.
You know, especially on the pay, yes, I, I understand you're still looking, but as far as pay is concerned. We need, if we need to take care of it, let's take care of it, so that you guys don't have any issues getting something.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we could just.
Amendment, amendment to the pay plan, sure.
Thank you for that.
More difficult things.
Than last time. And again, you've been very, very lucky that, um, that our city manager accepted the city manager position with that salary and. Continue to act as, as finance director, uh, all these years. And other cities, and I've been looking at other cities in Miami-Dade County, I can tell you that there are city managers that were promoted to that position. I've been, or the resources director, or the public works director, or whatever, and they, uh, have those salaries. Was substantially more, so. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Thank you.
All right, so that's it, nothing else, thank you all so much.
That's funny, I, I was looking at the, the year or two, looking for the salary, for the manager, I'm like. How is that, if you guys are good selecting, how is it?